[Music] 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 This is, uh, so this is city work session for March 17, 2025. A first item review of the minutes of code order 24 meeting. Any comments on that? Okay. Next one is unfinished business ordinance amending section 2-1 to code enforcement officers of the code ordinance since city developments since it provides for development compliance officers defining their authority for other purposes. This is on third reading.
I have a question. Taylor, is there any question for you? As far as she had that like, come on, 2009 to June of 2023, this is the thing you guys already had in power to do. And then we did a big shift over moving code enforcement away from you guys and by inspection away from you guys to other departments. Um, will we find that maybe this causes issue on your backs in to get things done by a minute's wait meal?
Yeah, basically increased internal procedures, duplicating efforts, things of that nature. So we're just asking to get it back so we can line up those duplicities and smooth out the internal process for staff.
Why was it moved in the beginning?
I can't answer that.
Why was what moved? Yeah, at one time we had all the code enforcement and building inspectors. It was all under Doug Cap and we were moving things to different areas to, I guess, make the job less than it was. And it was my perception that some of the management quality was high in those other departments, like the police chief and the fire chief. And a lot of the other cities had the building inspectors under fire. There's more of a similarity or consistency there than you would think. So that's why I moved building inspectors under there and moved the code enforcement under police. And I think it's worked out well. The, the, talking to other mayors, a lot of mayors are reluctant to move the code enforcement under police because they think it's too scary or whatever. But, but our police seem to be able to work in a restrained manner. So I think it's worked out okay. They're very big, they're very big believers in getting compliance rather than worrying about, you know, having a contest to see how many citations you can give. So, uh, you know, I've been pleased with the code enforcement under police. But, but in this particular case, the stuff that planning is doing is so specialized. And, uh, and in fact, we had an internal employee switch over to be the development code officer. And I'm a big believer in people switching inside the organization if they want to. I think it's great across pollination. In fact, we have some of that going, some more of that going on recently that I'm pretty enthused about. And, uh, Taylor, I guess, wasn't shocked, but I was shocked how, how good Dylan was at this right out of the gate. I mean, he's just been a spectacular improvement now things are going. So, Larry?
I guess one of our code enforcement officers was pulling the street duty this morning for several hours. Changeland, the traffic signal on the northbound side was broke off due to the wind. And so he was there trying to direct the traffic.
Yeah, we've really had some high winds lately.
I have a question. I think this would maybe be for Mr. Kelly, but if we were to vote for this ordinance, but later we weren't happy with that result, what would it take to, uh, to reverse or change?
Another ordinance to repeal it. So it'd just be adopted, another ordinance. The ordinance is repeal ordinances, so that's what you have to do.
So it's undoable if needed?
Of course, everything you do, we could, I wouldn't say everything you do can be undone, but it could have consequences. Like if you approve a contract and we back out, we could breach it. But I mean, if you adopt a rule like a jaywalking is not permitted, you can repeal that rule. So you have that authority.
Thank you. Another thing I wanted to bring up, I'll just roll it in now if that's okay. We had added it on as a discussion item at the end, but that was really, I just wanted to share the information with the other council members and also follow for you. So at the end of the packet, there's a discussion item and I shared an email that I received from Joe Rexminkle. So I did, I did a little bit of research of this on my own about how other cities handle this item. I know that had come up some. So I spoke with Rogers and with Bentonville about it. So the email that's attached, and I'll just let you guys read it in the packet, but that's from Joe Rexminkle and he works in Rogers. So in Rogers, the code enforcement for the development sections of the code actually do not roll up through the, the community development department. But as Rex explains in the email, he wishes that it does and he thinks it's the best practice. So when I explained to him what we were considering, he said he would really support that. And he outlined, I thought, really well, a lot of points as to benefits to arranging it and the way that it's being proposed. And he also said that he used to work for Kansas City and that in Kansas City, the, uh, the community development was in charge of their own code enforcement for those sections of code. So he said it goes both ways. He's had it where they do oversee it and where they do not. And he feels like the best practice is for community development to oversee that. And then I also spoke with Shelley Kerr, who oversees code enforcement in Bentonville. And in Bentonville, code enforcement does roll up to community development for those sections of code. So that's according to Shelley Kerr and she's in charge of that group. So they have two code enforcement officers who are in charge of that section of code. So happy to.
Does Bentonville also have code enforcement under the police department?
So they also have that as well? Yes, they have both.
But they do have the code enforcement under planning and development.
Yes, they have two.
I talked to them, I talked to Bentonville as well and they said that only the code enforcement under the police have authority to issue citations.
So I suppose, yeah, I asked, that's interesting because that's, um, she's, yeah, she said that they, so it is code enforcement and they, they had the ability to write citations, so.
I didn't share my email with you all, but I do have that in the email.
As your city prosecutor, I'm, I'm hesitating to say this, but I'm going to say this. Really, this ordinance is a question of how much you want to hinder our ability to enforce the rules that you have. It doesn't adopt anything new at all. And a lot of people that you hear from, I dare say, are concerned because now they're going to have to face consequences for stuff. And so, because I, numerous times, we, we, we just have a tough time. We've always had a tough time, so I'm not going to, but it really is a matter of how tough is it going to be on us to enforce the rules that have been adopted by us? It doesn't do anything different than what's already on the books.
Some of the notice of violations that I assumed that people emailed me were, you know, a short-term rental that had four bedrooms and advertised for eight beds. And they received a notice of violation for advertising for eight bedrooms. That's not the case. They would just have two bedrooms per, or two beds per bedroom. And so I've seen a lot of those examples and so I'm still hesitant to support these.
But if they were listed that way with VRVO or Airbnb, and some of them will list different things in there or allow different things to be done.
And it all ends up coming to me because I prosecute all of them. So whether the code officer signs the ticket or whether you authorize one of Taylor's people to sign the ticket, they end up on a docket and I end up dealing with it. And, and if it's, if it's a case like you're talking about, then I'm going to dismiss it. Hopefully it wouldn't get to that point though. I understand what you're saying, but, um, I, I will say this, and I'm not, again, you guys get told things that aren't necessarily the case all the time. They get, you get told things about what the staff has told you and it is not happening. So I don't want to get into specific examples. Am I overstating that, Taylor?
Oh, no, I was just going to say we do send out notes of violations for when people put more than three people in a bed or two. The ordinance says no more than three people per bed, so we will send them out.
Well, I guess my point, I'm going to shut up now, is just when you hear something that we're doing something, ask us because it very well may not be the case or there's a misunderstanding.
That's what I was going to say, I think there can be misunderstandings if a notice is sent. It shouldn't be, it's first that conversation before they're actually being cited or held responsible. So as long as a correction is made, that's the purpose, that's the warning, so.
Yeah, well, some of these, I have, you know, I was sent the email that they got sent by the city and I shared some of them with the, the city attorney. And also I'm fairly knowledgeable in short-term rentals. I own a couple of them here, so I, the screenshot of their Airbnb listing was in the email. So it could have just been a mistake and obviously if it goes to court it would be dismissed, but I'm very worried that it will create additional lawsuits for the cities.
Great.
Well, I'm just going to go back to what I said last month, um, because I don't understand why we keep trying to compare. I mean, there's nothing illegal about this, right? I mean, okay, so to constantly compare ourselves to other communities over and over again. This is unique to us and, you know, the, the chief of police and the director of planning is sitting here asking us for this. It's very simple. You know, if, if it comes into a situation where somebody wants to sue the city, well, there's Jason. So I mean, you know, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't see people lining up at the door to sue us. I mean, maybe what, three extra cases a year or something like that.
They also say they have to try to back the city off all the time.
So, I mean, this is a tool that the director needs and the chief police needs. So that's, that's all I need because that's communication, the people who are affected are in this room, immediately affected, right here. So.
Okay, I guess we've talked about that enough, so we can go next week. Uh, next one is seeing ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through May 31, 2026. Karen, this is your appropriate.
Much lighter topic. This is an annual request that we put through. It's basically we've reached the time where we need to replenish our salt and sand and everything that we used over the last winter season. The reason we're asking for competitive, to waive the competitive bidding is because we usually seek out quotes from local vendors. In the salt industry, we're kind of one of the smaller customers that these outfits entertain. And so we're able to usually purchase it off-season. This last year, I sent out six requests for quotes. Of those, two of them were no reply. One replied and said no bid and we actually received three official quotes, you know. And so that's kind of the turnout we expect to get. That's why we kind of waived the competitive bidding. I think we would have less people attend a competitive bidding for the quantities that we seek. I guess that's about it unless you have any questions for me on it. It is within our normal operating budget and our materials account.
Uh, Larry?
This, this ordinance is going to expire on May 31st of 26. One is the one for this year that was authorized last.
It expired at December 31st. It makes more sense for us to carry it just past our salt and sand season, our winter season, so we can replenish it.
So the current one already has expired.
Correct.
So if you have an opportunity to buy salt and sand now, you have, you, you don't have any opportunity.
Correct.
So this is a, an ordinance.
She couldn't buy more than $30,000 worth.
Right, without going out for competitive bidding.
Yeah, but you still can do, you can still do that.
Mm-hmm, yes. And our prices vary. It depends on what, our quantities vary from year to year depending on what stores we had the previous year. I did print out what we spent in 2024 and the total of salt and sand combined was $36,372. But if you go back one year to 2023, that amount was $61,980. So it puts us in a better position where we have those quotes and we can use this as we go to replenish.
So do you feel that there's any risk, does this go through three readings, Mr. Trump?
This is the third and final.
She's asking to go third and final, so it will, it will have to go to third and final unless you want to think about it.
Need to have an emergency clause is what you're asking?
No.
To suspend the rules.
Just go to third and final.
Suspend the rules, it's not, not an ordinance of general, general enforcement nature, so.
Yes, and I added that in there, did it show up?
But a rule suspension should go third and final would be appropriate to, to make this happen next month, or excuse me, next week.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Karen. Next one's an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Forbes Mazers LLP in an amount not to exceed $51,000 for audit services for the year ended December 31, I think that, 2024.
Mayor, this is actually a resolution. The resolution is in the packet, but somehow on the, on the agenda it's listed as an ordinance, so we need to fix that, but it is a resolution.
Okay.
Chase, oh, okay. I don't know what happened there.
I had a little check off box, I probably didn't go back and check. Just put it in as an ordinance.
But just put it for resolution for next week, okay.
And it is 2024 because it's last year's.
Yeah, that's right. Did you want to say a few words again?
Uh, do you have any questions?
Some green words of wisdom.
Any words of wisdom? Vote, yes. Otherwise we're doo-doo.
Well, yeah, that's just a quick question. Is this something that we do each and every year?
Yes, this is the first year that we've done the, the bigger audit, the gap audit that we're required to do for the new debt for the fire station remodel. So this is a much more advanced audit than that. So it's about, it's somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 more expensive than it was last year. And, um, you know, that difference, there's a spread there and that difference is going to be based on how we perform in the audit, right? We, you know, I don't know if you guys remember, but when we talked about the new debt, it's a much more complicated, much more complicated audit.
What you're saying is it's a higher level quality than we're getting, right?
Correct, yes. And the, the challenge for us is, is all about the fixed assets, right? Because we haven't, if you go back and look at prior years, you're going to see that fixed assets are a footnote in the audit, right? And this year, well, there'll be all these new schedules. I can't wait for the meeting where we give you the audit this year. You guys threw your heads to the wall. But not only is it, is it a footnote, it's an audited footnote and it gets put in some, a certain other schedules. So it, you know, that's the big one. It's a pretty big deal. Any other questions?
Larry?
I guess one more, since it's a more complicated and more thorough audit, did we budget for this amount?
I think I budgeted for, I think I budgeted for 40, I think it would have been 50. I know I budgeted for at least 45, but I think it was 50.
It wasn't last year's number with the little increase, that's what I'm asking.
No, no, they said, they said it will be at least 45, maybe 50. And so I think that's what I budgeted was 50. Good question, no, thank you for asking.
Okay, I guess we're all set, thank you. Uh, the next one, resolution E, has been knocked out. And the reason is we had another bid that was so low, it didn't have to come before council.
I guess an observation was that I didn't see a tabulation of the bidders that were invited in the bid amounts that were entertained in this process. And I think it should be a standard procedure that you require.
Be an attachment, yeah.
It's just good policy and good practice, having played the role of the department head in the city. That was the routine thing that every department head was expected to do as part of their job.
Yeah.
There's a good record keeping process for the electorate.
So I can tell you, one bid was about $90,000, one was $58,000, a little over $58,000, and the one we took was $28,000.
And, and all I'm suggesting, Chief, is a, is a schedule that says these are the bidders that we invited and this is what they bid. If they had no bid, then they, there's no bid.
Yeah, we can do that. That's not what we've done in the past, but we can do that.
Provide a good documentation that's ready and easy to provide to anybody.
So we can go back to the $58,000 that was on the original agenda.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm only suggesting that you do a record keeping.
Go on. Just saying.
I think, the, the, the point is, since it was $28, y'all would never, it wouldn't be.
Right, but the record should still be there.
We've got, Steve, you can talk about the record.
I got you, yeah.
Okay.
Do we, do we need, so since item D is now a resolution, should we discuss whether or not that can be added to the consent agenda or do we just assume everything? I don't know how we're going to handle that.
I was going to, thank you for bringing that up because I, when I went through my list, I saw ordinance and I skipped over it. But would you, is there any objection to putting the, uh, the audit contract resolution on the consent agenda? Okay, then we'll just kind of do that, we'll check it off and we'll put it on the consent agenda.
Good point.
Okay, and we'll, we can kind of do that as we go through the list.
Okay. F is, thank you, Chief.
I got the next two.
F is a awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group for the total amount of $56,234 for the purchase of one Chevy Silverado 1500 four-wheel drive pickup for use by the fire department.
Okay, first of all, this was out by competitive bid. I feel pretty strongly about going out for bid, even though we know that this is, you know, pretty much the only provider for that type of vehicle for the fire department or has been in the past as well. There was competitive bid through the, or competitive bid process. The bid was $56,000, but if you take off the uplifting, the emergency uplifting on it, which you and I talked about, the emergency lighting is about $48,000. Minus several things we have to have like toning packages and special, it's a special service vehicle, so it's got wiring, it's, it's untied to that vehicle and that's an extra cost. The engine, I think going from a six-cylinder to a V8 is, is a little bit more like $2,000, close to $2,000. So it's a little, a little bit different than what you might have seen in the past on some of the stuff that Chief Graves has bought. But, um, this is what we use, where you have to pull a lot of trailers and equipment at times and so we try to make our packages to where they, they can do that. So, but that's everything, included everything, so we can get the taxes, there were no taxes paid on and so forth.
Is this replacing the current?
It is, it's actually replacing a 2000, or a 2010 1500 Chevrolet pickup truck. We've had really good luck with Chevrolets and you'll see as, as the next one, our Tahoe. We're replacing 2011 Tahoe. So we had really good luck with our Chevrolets, Tahos, pickup trucks and stuff, very low maintenance on them, but they're just getting up the mileage. I think they both have 144,000 miles on them.
And the one in G is replacing something that's really old too.
That's correct, it's a 2011 Tahoe, we're replacing it, it's got 145,000 miles on it, I believe.
We actually met with a vendor last year who had a theory of leasing vehicles and keeping them just a short time when their, uh, value is still really good. And when I saw how long that the fire chief keeps his vehicles, I said, there's no way that's going to work better than this.
So we might get, I think our last Tahoe was an '08 Tahoe, which was a few years ago. I think we got around five or six thousand for it when we sold on the bid. So we'll get somewhere between there, probably four or five thousand.
When you put them up for auction, most people believe that since they're from a municipality, they are maintained well.
We've had really good luck with that on vehicles anyway.
That's usually the opinion that's there and it's not always true, but usually it is.
But that's true with a regular person, you don't know what you're, what, how the maintenance has been, you know, some people are pretty good at it.
Well, or it's from the municipality, so they know it's been, yeah. So that unless they say something is defective, it's probably workable.
Yeah, as far as maintenance wise on those vehicles, they've been very low maintenance other than routine, you know, oil changes and things like that. Maintenance on them has been really, really good. That's why we kind of stick with those, because we had really good luck with the Chevrolet brand in those types of vehicles in the fire service. But we're not using them like the police does though. We're not quite using them like that.
So these two units then would go up for auction in the spring or whatever?
That's correct, yeah, as soon as we get these, when we get them ordered, this is passed and then we get them ordered, we get them in and we'll get those on. The police department does the gun bids and we usually turn it over to them and they sell them for us.
So I guess it's the same question, do we want to put these on the consent agenda or not?
Budgeted item?
Yes, $65,000 for each. That's what I'm budgeting capital.
Okay.
Quite willing for sure on that. And I've got the next one too, other than, I mean, I do have the next one kind of, but I'm going to let, I'm our chief building official, Roger Guyer. I'm going to let him come up there and kind of talk about this.
Let me read it. Resolution A is amending the 2025 city budget to appropriate a total of $53,083.33 and to authorize an additional building inspector position beginning June 2025.
We skipped the Tahoe, Bertie, did you talk about the Tahoe?
No, we talked, yeah.
We did, we hit back there.
All right, so we want both. So are we good with consent on that one as well?
Yeah, that's okay. So this is Roger Guyer, our chief building inspector.
I'm glad to be here. Chief, when chief hired me, chief and Glenda hired me, they said, let's step up the game of inspections because we need to. We have so much going on in the community now and we are shorthanded on inspectors. We are uncomfortable with the level of inspections we're handing out. Generally, the inspectors that we have can do 16 to 18 inspections a day. And I have a list here, 3-3, one of them did 25, the other did 26, continuing on 19 and 27. And we're having our plan reviewer do inspections and he's done 16 and nine on those days, 24, 26 and 13, 20, 25, 10, 30, 17, 8, and it goes on and on. We're, we're overstretched on, on what we need to do. We're, we're overstretched on, on what we need to do to keep a good review of the, uh, building industry in the area, and I feel that we definitely need another inspector.
Can we make this happen prior to June?
What we're doing right now, well, we could make it happen prior to June, yes. The sooner it would be, the better. It was, it was what I expected the time to recruit and, uh, the next person would be, but, yeah, I'd like it as soon as I could get it, for sure. Yes.
This was not budgeted in the budget, you proposing to add a building inspector, so this would be an amendment to our budget. We're now seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over our budget that's coming out of our cash reserves, just to remind all of you. And so this means, uh, it's now not seven hundred and fifty, it's eight hundred and three thousand that's over, so.
One of the things that I, that I did when I came on board is I stopped, uh, accepting pictures for inspections because we were having a lot of problems with that. You cannot do an inspection with pictures. And when I did, when I stopped having pictures, the load came up and the builders started getting really upset because of the time it took to do the inspections. There's a lot more than just taking a picture and shooting it in. So we're doing better inspections and we need the personnel to do that, that's.
How do you, how do you go about assigning the inspection? How do you set up an inspection? If, if, if I'm a builder, what do I do to get an inspection on something?
You can go in the portal and you can schedule an inspection, or you can call in and speak to the permitting staff and they'll schedule your inspection for you.
Based on what's in the, what's in the?
What's in the queue, yes, yeah. And, and we were five days behind recently and they were really screaming about that, so we have tried to pick up the pace and use our plan reviewer to do inspections, he's also an inspector, but we need our plan reviewer to do plan review.
So when you assign those, how do you, how do you go about assigning them?
Area, geographic area. It's so hard in this community to get from one site to another that they spend a lot of time just, just getting from one site to another.
So you've broken down the city into what, how many?
West, east, and central.
Okay, so you have what, two in the, two in the east, two in the middle?
I have one west, one east, and one central.
So you only have three?
When I, while I don't have three, I'm using my plan reviewer to do part of it.
He has two.
Thought we had three inspectors.
You used to have three.
What happened to that? What happened to that? What happened to the third one?
South Carolina, he was trade levels.
Oh, he was your chief building official?
Yeah, he was, he was currently taking that over.
So you're, you're filling in for the chief building official now?
He is the chief.
He is.
He is, he's not filling in, he is.
Not filling in, but yes, well, yeah.
At the, at the time, he recommended the person we had do some inspections that they didn't do all the time, so we moved that person in the fire, fire department for inspections.
And so, tell me about each of the inspectors that you have, what are their qualifications? Are they?
Uh, basically certified plumbing, electrical, and here, they can be a plumbing, uh, licensed plumbing, but they're plumbing, electrical, building, mechanical, and, uh...
So they have all four areas?
They inspect all four areas.
General building, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical.
Yes.
So all of them are certified for all four of those?
They, it's with your ICC certified, which is International Code Council.
Okay.
They may not, and they may not be Arkansas certified at this time, as a matter of fact, HVAC in Arkansas doesn't have that posi, that...
Certified certification?
They're not there right now, so we have qualified people in those positions.
So each of the inspectors, including yourself, are qualified in all fours, uh, four areas? And so, uh, the, each of them work in area? Do you do inspections too or not?
No, I don't do inspections.
You do not? So we have two people covering three areas. What about contract service to fill in? Is this a peak?
This is, this is the, we're in the, we're in the springboard to what we're going to be doing. This is not a peak, this is the beginning of, of, by, by increasing the, um, the comprehensive preview of the inspections, that alone would have, should have brought another inspector on board. Doing picture inspections is a problem and it will be a problem, and it will cost a lot more than hiring another inspector, should we continue to do that.
Not only is it not reliable.
It is not. You cannot tell if a pipe is going downhill or uphill in a picture. So, yeah, so it's, it's pretty, it was pretty, um, surprising that we were doing picture inspections, I stopped almost immediately.
Can I ask, um, how many?
Jay?
And how many times is a building inspected?
You, you can have, it depends on if they're gonna pass, of course, but you're gonna have a footing inspection, you're gonna have an underslab plumbing inspection, which can be a part of a pre-slab inspection, you're going to have, um, retaining wall inspections, which are separate, you're gonna have foundation wall inspections, which are part of the structure itself that are separate, and then you go to a frame inspection, you have electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and now I'm having them do trusses, which isn't an independent inspection, it can be tied with frame, but it just makes it a lot more intense and more comprehensive.
So, so possibly nine inspections for a new home if all goes well, and we built around eight hundred and ten homes last year, is that right?
I'm not sure how many homes.
Six thirty-six.
Six thirty-six, okay. I don't know why I got eight hundred and ten.
And I, and I expect we're gonna do more this year.
Yeah.
And we're off to a running start, and, uh, yeah, so we're gonna try to do a better job and we're gonna have more to do.
I think this is overdue personally, so.
It, it reminds me of what Matty had talked about.
Absolutely.
And his concerns.
That was prior to them taking it over at the fire department.
Right, but it reminds me of his concerns and he, in order to address his concerns, he suggested that we oughta do a better job with that.
And part of the job of the building official will be to audit inspections and, and do OJT's on inspections also, so that'll be coming up when we move forward. So the building official will be busy and he won't have time to do inspections, in my opinion, okay?
Do you know how many inspections you did last year, or?
How many inspections we did last year? I don't know the count for the whole year.
I'll descend for fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand? Fifteen thousand.
Because you have other types of things somebody wants to do in addition on their house, not a new building, so you have inspections relating to all of those kinds of things.
So that's a twenty-seven.
Maybe an electrical thing because you put in a new furnace or you put in a hot water heater.
Generators, we had a big surge, of course, no pun, of generator inspection requests, and we tried to get through those, and, uh, dock repairs and, and, uh, just all, there's a whole variety of things to do here. Foundations are one of the biggest challenges because of topography is so, uh, radical. And so one side of the house may have an eight-foot wall and the other side may be wide open, and so that takes, that's, that's a lot of, uh, a lot of review.
So does an eight-foot wall require engineering design?
Oh, absolutely. Depends on the, it's, they call it unbalanced backfill, so how much pressure's against it from the outside, from the, from the grade. If you go over four feet, you start to talk about engineering, you go over eight feet, then you're definitely talking about getting an engineer involved. But we do have, through our code, the two thousand twenty-one international residential code, we have offerings there that they can use up to the eight feet. They go over that and then we're, we're not going to be able to do it.
So, so those that are, so we don't involve as many engineered walls that are eight-foot tall?
We have engineering that's a part of the international residential code.
Are you talking about retaining walls?
We're talking about foundation walls.
I'm talking about foundation walls.
Are we still talking about a inspector? At all?
Yeah, retaining walls require engineering on four feet. I believe it's four feet. Retaining walls are something separate than the foundation walls of the house. The residential code has engineering within the code that they can use in reference up to a certain level of unbalanced backfill. And if they go above that, they have to have an engineer, and they have to have the engineer inspected too.
So you, you require submittal of that engineer's report that he's inspected and it's okay?
If they're involved, if they have to be involved in it, then they'd have to give us a report, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, my inclination is not to have that on the consent agenda since it's amending the budget and all, so. I do wanna make one comment, it was very accurate what Larry said about the seven hundred and fifty thousand over budget. That, I mean, that our budget is seven hundred and fifty thousand out of whack. Our director of finance believes that we're not gonna use any of that seven hundred and fifty thousand, and in fact, we'll break even. But I am feeling the heat on, this is an example of adding fifty-three grand, this is not the last one.
We'll see more of them, you're saying?
Yeah, there's some, well, like Oldham Road, somebody's gonna talk about that later today, there's things that are happening, so, so we're gonna give it our best shot. Anyway, next one is, uh, resolution I, approving the mayor's reappointment of Demira Taitzer to the Bella Vista Arts Council for a three-year term. She's the chairperson of the council and has been a real mover and shaker, I guess, in moving it forward. I actually talked to her shortly before the meeting and she's, uh, got a really bad cold, there's kind of a cold going around, I happen to know a lot about this, 'cause my spouse has it, where you, you're real bad, then you think you're better, oh, boy, we're better, then the next day you're bad again, it's the weirdest thing. Anyway, she's got one of those, so she might be able to come next week for the regular meeting, so.
In, in reference, she's done a very good job in the past, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And she's also just, um, she's like the Arkansas, um, statewide arts representative for women, so she's very impressive.
Yeah, she got a new job this last year, being over the whole state.
National position.
Yeah.
So should this be a part of the consent agenda as well? Should this be a part of the consent agenda, appointing her?
Except for the people on council, yeah. Okay.
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay, next one is J, a resolution amending the twenty-twenty-five budget to recognize to appropriate an additional hundred and one thousand in grant revenue from the Arkansas Department of Transportation and the Walton Foundation to fund a hundred percent of the active transportation public outreach and education project. Taylor, do you wanna talk about this?
Um, so last year, planning and active transportation applied for two grants, one with the, uh, well, technically we applied for two, was denied one, but we applied for the RDOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant, um, to do a public outreach and education for active transportation safety in Bella Vista. We also applied for a planning feasibility study along seventy-one, but we were denied that one, but we were granted, we found out this January, um, in twenty-twenty-five, that the board did award us the eighty-one thousand or eighty percent of the project cost, um, which that was eighty-one flat, and then Walton Family Foundation awarded us the twenty percent, so that way they covered the city's portion, so the city will not put any of our money into this, we just have to appropriate the budget, so that way it's balanced. Um, Walton Family's already sent their check for their portion and then, so that will be a paid upfront to use for the project once it starts, and then the eighty-one thousand will be reimbursed upon use. Um, we do have to pay the one percent, which is like eight hundred and ten bucks as well upfront, so that, of course, will come from the twenty thousand we have. Project slated to start in April, we should get our agreement from RDOT the first two weeks of April, um, for us to consider and sign, but we do have to have it back to them by April twenty-eighth, um, so that way we can start the on-call services to get the project started to use the TAP grant, so. Um, wanted to get this part cleaned up in March, so that way, in case we do get that agreement, the first or second week of April, we're good to go. Matt, do you have any questions?
What's the timeline on completion? What's the timeline on the project? What's the schedule say?
Um, the schedule, scope, and the agreement have not been, um, agreed yet, that's what we're waiting on.
So you don't have a timeline in the application? It's gonna take six months, eight months, twelve months, fifteen months?
It would be, I would, just telling you off, you know, off the top of my head, it would be like a year max. Um, it's just education outward, um, basically communications efforts, they're gonna partner with our communications director, um, be on-call, they're not really engineers, um, on-call consultants to produce education, um, like pamphlets and graphics and things like that, as well as maybe some public outreach, things like that, so I wouldn't imagine it would take longer than a year, but, um, we have not finalized the scope or had the mayor sign anything yet for that.
So we need to do a request for proposals, professional services?
No, we won't have to because RDOT has on-call for this specific thing. So RDOT will propose, actually, they'll sign us, essentially they'll tell us who we're using for this.
Oh, they have people already qualified, or?
Yeah, they already have contracted on-call, um, consultants for this. So, did you?
What is the goal, what are we educating people on? I'm just curious, it's great that you got the grant.
It's a part of our Vision Zero, the, the plan that we adopted and endorsed through regional planning, um, zero deaths, zero injuries, uh, is the goal, so basically just reducing any traffic situations between bike ped and motor vehicles.
Was that in the packet?
Um, it was in the packet when we asked you if we could apply.
Well, that's for y'all's benefit, because half of us weren't here, because I, I...
That's a good point. I can, um, update the survey report for this with me.
Yeah, I mean, it, I've gotten the beneficial for you guys, just to run through.
It does say like, active transportation public outreach and education project, but yeah, it doesn't like...
Does sometimes tell you much more than that, yeah.
But we're not paying for it. I told them.
Basically, we went for a couple different grants.
Yeah, she got the grant and the Waltons.
I thought this one was just showing that what responsible people we were, and we really wanted to get the other one, but we didn't get, so.
Try again. This one's really moving on right now, it's five actually.
It's stuff like, don't run over people on bikes and things like that, so, you know?
Yield to the spike of energy.
I think Kim wants to add something, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I'm just saying that, that this isn't mainly the revenue, but...
Yes, we're back okay now.
Only the revenue, because what we've said, what I understood, based on our last conversation, is that only expenditure is not approved, that you just told me that they, they said you can't spend anything until we give you permission, because they don't know that, they don't get money from the feds.
No, no. We were told we cannot spend money because we do not have an agreement in place yet, and that's what they're working on, that's what they're gonna send us by the second week, hopefully they will. Do not spend any money until they have that, until they give us the green line, because then that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be part of the agreement, it couldn't be reimbursed.
Well, they were a little down, a little down with the federal government, commented with the money, because of...
So then we really have a couple of issues here that are floating around. One is we need to, uh, authorize the signing of a contract, either in this resolution or in another one, enter into an agreement for these, right? We're accepting the grants, but we, we will have some strings attached, so we're, so we'll have to amend the, the revenue side of our budget, but we'll also have to amend the expense side, because we're gonna spend that money. So we have both sides of the budget to amend, don't we?
I don't know, Jason, I'm a little confused about that myself, so I, I...
So who are we paying this money to?
So this money would go to whoever RDOT signs this to.
And they haven't chosen them.
And they have not chosen that person.
So we don't have an agreement we can appro...
We do not have an agreement.
So if, we have to, we have to enter the agreement with them though, because it's reimbursable from RDOT, they do the selection. So you would, assuming it's gonna be more than forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars at the time, which apparently it obviously would be, given the total amount of contract, so, um, you would see the actual agreement come through and it be approved. This just amends the budget, uh, to recognize the revenue.
That we've received, 'cause we've already received it. So this is one step.
Yeah, this is the acknowledgement for the grant and the acknowledgement for the...
Yeah, we've just received the Walton family's twenty, which I've been told needs...
Unfunded share, that's what this is for.
I hate to...
For the grant and the unfunded share, twenty percent.
We're making it awfully complicated.
Yep, sure are. Yeah, I, I support this, if you get approved for grants and you put all of the legwork in, I, I support that, that's great.
But I will probably be kind enough to you guys, one from RDOT told us who we're using.
Yeah, we're increasing revenue, that sounds great.
Okay, so should we put this in the CG?
I would say no, personally, only because we're spending money.
This is receiving money, yeah. You, you don't like receiving money?
Uh, spending, the other ones are budgeted, the other ones are already accounted for. So this is not budgeted and it's not accounted for.
That's okay. That's okay.
He may vote in favor of it, but if he wants to talk about it at the meeting, that doesn't-
Okay. Resolution K is requiring the city of Bella Vista to study the feasibility of enacting an alcoholic beverage sales permitting and taxation program. This is from Jay, his work.
Hello, fellow city council people. I did send out a fun little chart, did anyone, did you guys get this in your packet? I can pass this around if you wanna see it in person. Okay, so I wanna start most importantly with the why I am asking for us. So first of all, this is a, just a resolution, not an ordinance, we're just asking the city to study the viability of an alcohol tax. If we only collect $2 on it, I don't wanna do it, right? So the reason I would like us to study this is to find additional revenue dollars, because I would like for us to be able to properly staff our fire department and our EMTs. It's my understanding in my talks with Chief Sims, that we're, that we're roughly behind about six people. So the goal would be to maybe add three more people this year, and then budget three additional folks for 2026. It's my understanding, they don't work for free, and that does require money, and so I would actually invite all city council members to help me solve this issue. I believe it would cost roughly $500,000 for these six personnel. And so my idea is to just study the viability of an alcohol tax as a proposed and potential way to be able to fund these additional personnel. But I'm open to other ideas as well, if anyone has any.
Ken, you explain, an alcohol tax, is it for purchase at retail, through restaurant? How does it, how does that get called?
Oh, they love.
Yeah, I would love for the study to include, maybe, and, and I'll, I'll work with Kim if, if we end up passing this, on maybe some potential parameters, but whether that's package, whether that's hospitality, whether that's business permits, all the above, any of that, a mechanism of how we would collect that.
Do we know like the cost of a study to do this?
And do it in-house.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, I love revenue.
Great. And, and I also just wanted to make a couple of notes on, on why my ask is, and I know Chief Sims is here as well, so he can also make the case, but just if anyone has any questions about why I feel like our fire department EMT are understaffed, obviously we all know that our city's growing tremendously, and I do have just a couple of stats. So in 2019, we had an average of nine and a half calls a day, but in 2024, we had an increase of 12.9 calls a day, so that's a 35% increase from 2019 to today. So one, I would say we need additional people, because we have a higher amount of calls. Number two, just number of all calls, and I know Travis would know about this and Chief Sims as well, but a number of all call would be when we don't have enough personnel, so they're calling in folks who are off-duty to come in. And I, I feel like the number of all calls are awfully high, where we're running out of staff at our stations. So in November, that happened 10 times in the month, October happened seven times, June of last year, it happened 15 times during the month, and in February of 2024, happened eight times. So it's, it's happening frequently, many times a month where we're running out of staff at our stations. And then lastly, I've spent some time touring our new fire department at City Hall, and when I was able to speak with some of those, with some of our staff there, they were just really tired, you know, an average, from what they explained to me, an average shift now versus several years ago, they're, the percentage of time that they're out on a call is a lot higher, and the frequency that they're being called in while they're off work is a lot higher. They just seemed very tired to me. So I would like to support them in, in whatever way that looks like. So there's kinda two separate issues. I do want our city council to know that, that I feel like there's a staffing issue, and to be transparent, I don't feel like any particular person is against staffing them, I don't think that anyone has denied them, this is simply a funds issue, in my opinion. And so again, I'm just taking a stab at potential ways that we could have the funds to support them better, and just making the case that I really think that we should heavily consider staffing, you know, creating a pathway to better staff.
But the funds would not, they go to the general pot, it would not be, hey, this is only earmarked for fire.
Yeah. See, a couple things, I asked the fire chief about this, because we added three people this year, and he thinks that's three out of six, I guess we're talking about three more.
Yeah, well, we were, I hadn't budgeted 24, I was gonna ask for three mid-year, I got turned down those positions.
Yeah.
That would've been part of the six, and I was gonna ask for three next year.
Yeah.
So, just another real quick thing here, is in 2024, Bentonville Fire Department, with an engine or an ambulance, covered us 27 times, that's more than two times a month. We had, we had another city covering only, the coverage in our city was Bentonville Fire Department, either an ambulance or an engine. And one of the, and another ambulance was covered by private ambulance service, Paffrey, coming and covering. And all those 27 calls that Bentonville come in and stood by to protect our city, they made seven calls within the city. So we have another city coming in that cover our city. So most of the time, we don't see a whole lot of that, especially when you're full-time service, for a city trying to protect their own.
Yeah, also you've got to, everyone should take into account the amount of times that we have overlapping calls, or the amount of high acuity calls. For example, if you were to, you know, work a car accident with a patient entrapped and had to do cardiac arrest, that takes a lot of people and a lot of time, and they can't respond to other emergencies. And in Bella Vista, I think it's probably more important than somewhere like Bentonville, you can get from one side of the city to the other pretty rapidly, but here in Bella Vista, I don't know what, response times are bad. And if we could improve the staffing levels, we could probably at some point reduce the ISO and save property owners on insurance, so it's just, it's good for everybody if we could figure that out. But I was wondering how, uh, impact fees for tourism if the bike park, because then that might help us maybe, I don't know.
The reality about the ISO rating though, is that we, it's gonna cost us a lot to get there, to, to, to improve that for the little benefit that we really, we really-
Definitely another fire station. Right, that's exactly right. On another note, yesterday we had a structural fire, a working structure fire, about 10 o'clock last night, on top of 22 calls. They only worked 25 hours shift, it was. 22 calls, one of those was a working structure fire, took probably about three, two to three hours to handle.
Was 16, your first alarm, 16 people?
16 people.
Well, we did have a lot of overtime in 2024 in fire.
And that was covering-
More than we had budgeted for, and I was hoping, I was curious to see if adding three people is gonna help with that, or not, we'll find out at the end of the year.
Right now it's not.
Yeah.
But I mean, hopefully we'll get, 'cause I gotta get people trained too, to get in those positions.
And, and you, you're gonna need another fire station at some point, and that's gonna need people, is that in the number you're giving now?
No, no, this is, this is me trying to solve-
I didn't think it was, I just tried to make that one. Or fire, or half million dollar, or million dollar fire trucks.
And with our population growing, we also have an older population than the average of Arkansas, so we do see a lot of ambulance calls. I know our previous city council member, Mr. Snow, shared a story with me where his wife was having a medical emergency, and there was not an available ambulance, and so one of our fire department chiefs just hopped in in a fire vehicle, sorry for my lack of precise language, and, and he still made, he gave life-saving care to, to Mr. Snow's wife. But it is concerning the amount of times that we're, we're running out of staff or, or vehicles, and so I, I also just saw a level of fatigue in, in our fire department's eyes when speaking to them. I think at some certain point the overtime stops being worth it, and they really are just asking us to invest in giving them the appropriate headcount to reduce that fatigue. So I don't know about you guys, but when I call 911, I'd rather someone who's not completely exhausted take care of me and my family. Or them, or them not come from Bentonville.
For them to come.
Or for them to come.
Yeah.
And I know they're very dedicated to the cause. Again, no one, I just wanna say, I don't feel that anyone has, has blocked this or said, no, I just think that we need to pave a way. And so I think part of that is considering other streams of revenue. So on this chart that I did include, I did call out cities by their size, I know we get exhausted with city comparisons, but we are the 14th largest city in Arkansas, and we have a revenue of $669 per citizen. And, and as Karen would screen, we have 45 square miles and 500 few miles of road that we're working with there. Sherwood, Arkansas, they're the next largest city, and they're working with $1,149 per citizen. And then the next smallest city under us is Paracol, they're working with $846 per citizen. We're really trying to do a lot with a small dollar amount per citizen. So in this chart, I also included just number of square miles, whether they had an alcohol tax, their population, just a little bit of quick stats that I really think we can make the case for increasing revenue. And to your point about tourism tax, I did look into that, unfortunately, that's only a state-level tax, so states can charge, the state can charge that, but a municipality cannot. But I did speak with some of our state representatives about possibly making a path for that in the future, but not anytime soon.
It's, it's not on the agenda, but can we ask Taylor maybe her opinion on the impact fees from the bike park? Because it might help with this.
Well, I was gonna say, I, it just happens, it was gonna come to council next month, but I was refreshing on the impact fees. We use Carson's advice, and it happened that Peter Christie made me the point person on that, it was four years ago, and things changed. So at the time, he told me every three to five years, you know, you should look at it again. And I thought it might be, I contacted him recently, and he's ready to go. But we, actually, we just got his proposal yesterday, and so I was gonna bring it to council in April, and have him look at all the impact fees, the whole thing, and the idea being that we'd come up with a higher number than we have right now. Our numbers were pretty modest, and there was no complaints about it. It was about $1,100 a house for new construction, single-family house, and there's different ones for business and whatnot. But, so that's very timely that you brought that up, actually.
But impact fees only, they don't help with personnel, they only help with physical equipment.
Yeah, that's not an argument against this, but that's another, another thing to think about, yeah.
Well, it would help us build that new fire station, and opposite it with equipment.
But not staff it.
But not, but not staff it, it'd be empty, but like, it'd be there.
It'd be red.
One more thing about the, the Bella Vista Fire Department, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, it's the second-largest fire district in Benton County, is that right?
Yes.
They cover an area bigger than just the city.
Yeah, so you gotta remember, when you say 45 mile, we cover 65.
Yeah.
And we also, not only here, we also-
Which is the largest.
Go over.
We cover outside the state.
Which is the largest, chief? He said we were second largest.
That's Benton County?
I think Nepco. And Benton County is, I think it's, uh-
Oh, in Benton County, so who?
Nepco.
Who would be, it's Nepco, that's right, Nepco.
Nepco is bigger than we are, area-wise.
Well, area-wise, they, they cover 65, they cover over.
I was curious.
And, and also, one, I said one more thing, but it's like, we also, Bella Vista also provides mutual aid to other departments as well, and you have to do that if you want them to do that for you, and it's the right thing to do for our neighbors, so I don't-
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I did just wanna call it too, I'm a big fan of the bike park coming, really excited about that, but we shouldn't assume that would mean our medical calls would go down there either, so just food for thought. Mountain biking isn't a super safe sport, so, yeah.
I do need to inject one other thing on Resolution K. Our Director of Finance has expressed concern about the 45 days, because people in best position to do that are her and her assistant. And I was talking about internal, well, first of all, we have this audit, which is the first time we did a gap audit, it's a lot more work for her also. But the second thing is, it happens that Shelley is, Frederick is taking on a, a new position, and the Assistant and Director of Finance is taking Shelley's job. So from Kim's point of view, you know, she's trying to do the audit and do this study, and her assistant's leaving, we're trying to hire her new assistant. And so she actually asked me to ask for it being done by the time the audit is over, which is August, but at least I'd like to have more than 45 days, maybe 90 or something like, something longer.
Agreeable to you? Yeah. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to at least have a timeline, yeah.
So you want me to go ahead and put 90 in there, and we put that in the, in the-
It's 90, you can-
120.
120 is what I'm thinking.
120. So here's, from my position is, look, when you use the word study, that means, I, I used to be consultant, it's a very formal document, but if you want me to do some research, I can spend 10 hours doing research, and I can get back to you like next month and say, hey, just, this is my preliminary research, 10 hours of my time in the last month, you know, let me give you some information, right? And then you guys can see what you wanna do from there, that's, that's another way of doing it.
That's great.
If you still, if you still wanna do a full-on study.
In your attention sphere of this, what would you prefer? Are you, is that sufficient for you data-wise, that we can make a decision from there? Or would you prefer the 120 days to give our time?
There's a legal part of this too.
Okay.
So I've got to, what I, what I anticipated was that I would put together a memo of some information for whomever's gonna do it, assuming Kim's saying, you know, here are the types of things that we can charge, here are the ranges we can charge, here's what we can't charge for, here, you know, the, the limitations, because you gotta know that to know what, how to estimate a number, yeah.
Yeah, so if we're gonna do a formal study, then Jason's also gonna have to create a, a legal document that we're gonna have to present to all the, the people who sell, and I already checked, and there's 38.
This isn't intended for that.
38 businesses that have alcohol point, uh, permits in the state, I, I mean, in the city. So we would have to get their numbers of alcohol sales.
That's not what I, that's not what I thought, and Ms. Newport is, is the one who wanted to do it, and it's her project, but I'll tell you, what I thought it was, was, what kind of an idea can we have, based on the information that's publicly available, either at the state, alcohol beverage control, the, the existing data we give, that AMP has regarding all that sort of stuff? If we can use the available data, and then look and see what we could potentially charge ourselves, to come up with a number, a ballpark number within a few hundred, I mean, within a range to say, hey, we could expect to get somewhere between X and Y, and that could be a wide range, or, and then we also wanna, I think, wanna look at, what would we need to do internally to do it? Would we have to have another person? Could we handle that internally? Would that be software? You know, and then what would that cost? And then look at those, and then say, well, just cancel each other out, it's not worth the effort, you know?
Correct.
That sort of thing.
But look, if you, if, sorry about that, if you wanna know like, um, the range, you know, that I can put something together in 10 hours, you know, and I can tell you that, you know, it wouldn't make sense to add somebody, because one, we're talking about 1% here, right, in alcohol sales, and 1% of a million dollars is $10,000.
Some of these taxes, it can go up to 10% on mixed drinks?
Yeah.
But we already have taxes, I thought it was just the Bella Vista tax.
It, it would be, but in-
This would be the Bella Vista part, it can go up to-
Hot Springs has a 10% tax of their own, so if you were to have a mixed drink in, in Hot Springs, you would have a 33.5% tax on that.
Okay, so you're, you're-
It's pricey. I would not support that.
Yes, and then, and that, that would take a whole, a full study, because then you, you have this whole thing about, uh, people are gonna drink less, so your sales are gonna go down, right? And why would I drink in Bella Vista if I've got less sales tax on my alcohol in Bentonville? Or, or, so then that, now that becomes a full-on study.
Yeah, it's a lot of different things, that, uh, mixed drink tax right now in Bella Vista is 28%. The reason I know that is a citizen complained to me, and I thought he's just bad at math, and then I looked at the bill, and somebody told me, yeah, it's 28% currently.
Probably because they serve food in that same establishment.
That's why I was thinking you would do 1 or 2%, right?
But yeah, and we can certainly discuss all of that. You know, I'm, I'm really just looking for some, just some general guidance for the city council, so that we could maybe make an informed decision. And again, I, I invite all city council members, if they have other alternative ideas on how we could find the additional staff, I'd love to hear about that, but again, just trying to get some spaghetti thrown at the wall, which I think this would help do, and it could be a potential pathway forward for those additional headcount.
Larry?
I think one of the other sides of this, we're looking to collect money here, but how much do we need to collect? I'll give you an example. The, the full-time building inspector that we are talking about, part-time is $53,000 and a couple hundred dollars for seven months, well, the, the annual cost projected on that is $91,000 for this year.
Right, so it's, it's a bunch of-
Wages going up, it will be $93,000 perhaps next year for that same individual. So what I'm suggesting is that if we're talking about six new firemen, are they in the $91,000 or $150,000 range?
It's about half a million a year, that's rounding that, so to pay, if we were to
start all six folks-
So you're saying for the six new, we would need $500,000?
Annually, yes.
Doesn't sound-
Uh, Chief Sims and I met, and we, that was-
Includes salary benefits, payroll taxes, the whole pension.
So that's less than the $91,000.
Did we come up with that number a while back too? It was somewhere around that?
Anyway, you get the idea.
And that's rounding up, yeah.
So that would be less than the $91,000?
Yep, that's a different, yeah, they're different positions.
Great. You know, an observation might be why the firemen look tired, they sit there around for 24 hours or whatever for a shift.
48. Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours, and so if they've been up working, they might look a little haggard, you know, I've done those long-term shifts, it's tough after a while, you look a little tired.
Wendy?
Question is private for Jason, so if, in the idea like revenue bringing in, our city does need revenue, desperately, all kinds of ways, for different reasons, something like entertaining, like a, about initiative like Sunday alcohol sales, what would one?
Okay, so on, on that particular issue, just to authorize, say retail sales, you could buy beer and wine at the convenience store on Sunday instead of at Walmart, except we don't have one.
But that hurts.
Hurts, that is, that is a citizen-initiated petition process, so I think the way this happens in other towns is, you may have some owners of some establishments that work together to get some petitions signed, once they get enough signatures, which I believe is ten percent of the total number of voters in the last mayoral election, general election, and I don't know how many total voters we had at the general, but ten percent.
We need twenty thousand.
So it's, it's a significant number of signatures, once they get that, they present that to the city, and then the city adopts an ordinance to send it to the voters, and then there, of course, there are limited times a year you can have an election on that, and so then it becomes a vote, and then once it's approved, it happens, but the citizens have to start it, you can't start it, isn't it, the council can't start it.
But as a private citizen, I could help.
Sure, you can do whatever you want as a private citizen, yeah.
All I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, so what would we decide about the number of days?
I'm good with, and we can, I can get with you Jason, we could shape it up a little bit more before the next meeting, but I'm good with one hundred and twenty, and then maybe we could ask for a couple of updates and just formalize that a little.
I mean, I, there's nothing formal legally about the word study, I mean, if you wanna say, to review the feasibility and provide information or something like that, I'd be happy to talk to you and make this word however you want, okay?
Any other questions about it, or everyone?
Okay, now we'll move on to discussion items.
Can I jump in here real quick?
Sure.
It was brought to my attention prior to this meeting, so I didn't get a chance to put it on your agenda, so it's not on your agenda, that I made a mistake in February's City Council where the resolution was passed by council in February, okay, so I would ask you after I explain this, if we can add this to this month's agenda, to amend, a resolution was passed last month, okay?
So if we put Superior on, it should've said Red River Dodge.
That's my mistake, okay?
No, it didn't say, it probably was my mistake, it said in the memo.
It was my mistake, I think, either way, we use Superior so much that we get sort of like, okay, Superior, but, okay, let me read the resolution, it was Resolution twenty-two five dash nineteen, it read, and this is what council approved, it read authorize in the mayor and city council, or city clerk, to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group of Silent Springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of one Ram fifteen-hundred four-by-four pickup truck in an amount not to exceed forty thousand five hundred dollars for the use by the Code Enforcement Division of the Police Department, and this is budgeted within twenty-two-fives capital budget for the police department, I would ask that a resolution be put on this month's agenda, if council approves it, to keep, just amend that resolution to read, it'll be purchased from Red River Dodge, okay? Everything else remains the same, my mistake, I put Superior, in reality it was Red River Dodge.
We're not gonna lose out on this vehicle, are we?
Well, if it's not done this month, I might, that's why I don't wanna do it next month, that's why I came up here, because they have a vehicle waiting for us, they'll hold it, you know, until this is approved next, next week, okay, but I just ask that amendment's made, if I think you can do that?
I'd be good with it on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Budget.
So Jason, will you put that on?
I will, I need to just make sure I know which one to repeal when I do yours, I'll straighten that out.
Yes, twenty-two-five nineteen, okay, thank you.
If that was on me, if you put that in the memo and I missed it, that's highly likely that could've happened, did I put it in the memo?
I made it.
Take the information.
It's an easy one.
Actually, Jason, I'm gonna let you off the hook, my memo does say Superior, so it was my mistake.
All right.
The data was there.
I don't want anybody taking blame.
I was gonna say, I'm not gonna fire you, one of those. Make more mistakes than that. Okay, discussion items, first one is Oldham Drive Laboratory testing results and repair. Looks like Dan Downey.
We got our report.
You get all the easy ones, right?
On the Oldham Road failure, when Karen and I and Taylor and City Engineer Chris Brackitt went out there and kind of thought there was a bigger picture problem going on, this has proved that there is, to your question last time, best case scenario, bye-bye, it's out the window, it's not something we're gonna be able to deal with in-house, quick and simple breakdown on this report is that the material was sliding down the hill, out from under the road, quick graph here that they did for us, you'll notice here there's two different fill types sitting on top of rock, first fill type is anywhere from three and a half to five feet deep, and it's a silty gravelly sand fill, second fill type goes from there down to the eleven and a half, twelve feet where they hit bedrock, and that's a clay sandy mix, this area ingrained here is the area that's sliding down the hill, this slope is a one point two five to one, almost a one-to-one slope, it's very steep, and it's not adequate fill, and it's sliding out, so Karen and I and Chris Brackitt and the city engineer sat down with Terracan, went over all this, they had a couple of different solution ideas, two of them are kind of a fix, but for who knows how long, not a permanent fix, will ultimately end up sliding again, myself, I know Taylor fills this way, Chris fills it, I'm not gonna do something that's gonna get me through my career and then fail somewhere else down the road, the bigger picture fix is going to be a little bit more expensive, so what we've asked them to do is put a scope together of fees, engineering services, design, and bid package, put this all together to do the most appropriate fix, which would be driving pillars into the rock face, they're I-beam, H-beam slotted pillars, and you slide in the preformed concrete walls, refill that material with proper fill, stabilize it, put the road back, so they're going to put a scope together of what all of those fees will incur, send that over to us, we will bring that back to you for your approval, if you guys approve moving forward on whatever that cost ends up being, because we will need to also be asking for a budget adjustment to cover that, we won't have the funds for it, so provided you guys approve that, they will then get, turning on that next step.
Do they, I mean, is the road safe to travel, I mean?
It's, they feel that it's, it's safe, as in it's not going to ultimately blow out.
Okay.
Anytime immediately soon, sort of like the sunset did.
Did they give a distance?
Um, they didn't really give a timeline, however, it's really not that safe, because the amount that has slid, it's, it's a pretty, pretty.
What's, what's the distance section of road, like length?
They had it listed in here as forty feet.
Okay.
As far as what would structurally need to be engineered, distance-wise, I don't know that yet.
Okay.
That's all part of what they'll put together and send over to us, like I said, you guys approve that, we would at the same time be asking for a budget adjustment to cover that, then we'd go out to bid, and we would have a whole nother set of numbers to talk about.
And then, in our meeting we had this past week regarding this, and I said, I probably, someone's gonna bring it up, it's probably me, because I know citizens are gonna ask us, the Walton Boys, the Blue Crane Runway Group, do they have interest in like, helping us out financially, and?
Haven't asked them, it's really not a Blue Crane.
Their parking lot is way further down.
Yeah, it's really not a Blue Crane issue as far as, yes, they have a property that they've made some property swaps on whatnot, it's technically a city residential lot that adjoins to that as well as POA land. The majority of the budding land would be POA.
Maybe they would help us.
Huh?
Maybe they would help us financially.
I don't know that they would help us financially, they'd probably say, take whatever space you need.
Yeah, they might give us some right-of-way or something.
Right.
I didn't ask.
There's also the potential of a power pole or two needing to be moved, because those high voltage lines that run through there, we actually had to get the voltage and whatnot to do this study, and they weren't exactly able to drill right exactly where they wanted to, because they had to maintain an arc distance from that drill, it would be the same scenario, they, we would need to have those lines moved, so there's.
And that pole cost, was that what, fifteen thousand-ish per pole?
Last time we had a move, when we built County Road, it was fifteen thousand a pole, that was in twenty, when did we do County Road, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, I think?
It's bound to be cheaper now.
Always, right?
So there's that scenario that they've asked, Chris, the engineer, was going to be reaching off to Carol, he's got the contact there.
Minimal.
Coming up with that information.
Larry?
What's the line voltage that's running up there, is that Carol Electric?
Yeah, it's Carol Electric.
Is that a high power?
Yeah, it's a high-power transfer line.
All right, the main line along Oldham Drive is a three-phase, and the voltage is thirteen thousand two hundred volts face-to-face, and seven thousand six hundred twenty volts face-to-ground.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask, did they give you a ballpark figure on what to expect on this?
No, that's, one of the other things we asked for in this next scope is sort of engineering costs.
Preliminary estimate or something?
Engineered estimate, yeah.
So does Top, Terracan, do they do this kind of engineering as well?
Um, yes, they're able to do all of it, and actually as well be included in the oversight of the project, when if we say go, they will actually oversee it and do inspections at certain intervals.
Depending on what we have to do, is how we have to procure all those services, so.
Correct.
We can't really do design-build projects, so we have some legal limitations on just hiring these guys to take care of it, I mean, there's gonna have to be some, some contractor spec, it's gonna be expensive.
Will have to be bid as a.
It's gonna have to be bid, there'll be engineering services separate.
Terracan did say that they are familiar with the company more locally here in Arkansas that does these type of shorings on this smaller scale, and believe that they would definitely be interested in bidding in it, so, kind of more their wheelhouse, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Because it's a specialty type of work, you wanna advertise it a little bit more than just the local paper.
Yeah.
To try and entertain regional folks, Kansas City, St. Louis, Texas, Oklahoma.
Yeah, actually, the overseeing final approval engineer for this is actually out of DC, who our local people conferred with.
Top Con.
The top dog.
Or Terracan.
Shay?
I was wondering, did they mention any risk of, of weather events, I know we kind of had that washout on, I think, Lancashire, the highway during last year's heavy rains, did they mention anything like that?
No, they did mention that there was a high moisture content in the samplings, but it wasn't found a dent, so they don't believe it's a groundwater issue, they believe it's a seepage issue, which is what's.
Is there a water pipe under that?
Huh?
Is there a POA water pipe that could be leaking under there?
A big one.
There's a big main line running down Oldham.
They had a big break there in oh-six.
Okay.
Right around the corner going up the hill, shut down the traffic.
That's important to know.
Would be further down.
Yeah, I think the belief is that there's seepage through.
Yeah, this is more probably along the lines, the fact that the road is cracked open and water's been getting in.
And I said, yeah.
So the failure's up above the sharp curve?
It's by Tavis, not.
Yeah, you come up that sharp curve, past that guardrail, and I don't know the exact distance, probably less than a quarter mile further up past that guardrail.
How many streets are affected that come into there, in that, in that zone?
You have one street that would be south of the failure, and everything else is north of the failure.
So the streets south of the failure could be allowed to go down Oldham?
Would be able to access.
And the other one would be shut off, so.
Everybody else would have to go out to Chelsea.
That was my question, was it?
It would affect it for a population, because a lot of people.
Is it closing the street?
Just shutting it down.
And that was actually a question that.
It's a pretty major thoroughfare.
Every time one of these has come up, I've asked about closing the street, and nobody's bought that so far.
Because if there's a point where it's so expensive, we cannot afford it, or is it like closing it for a temporary amount of time until we can afford, like?
I think it's for a longer amount of time, that's where I'm coming from, closing it. Now, I've driven the road, but I'm not as familiar with if there's what the impact would be to the residents, which is very important, but.
If we, if we closed it with no determined date of when it would be fixed or opened, you would not agree the end of it.
Ever.
It's a pretty major thoroughfare, because those folks would then have to go.
Typically, when we have these road closures, as long as we have a back-to-business date, that's usually not so bad, you'll still get the compliance and the people that are frustrated, but at least they know.
There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
A target date.
Could we get a traffic count on that street, maybe?
Yeah, we could, we have traffic counters I can have set up, and.
Have we counted traffic on that street before?
Not to my knowledge.
And even then, it'd be so outdated.
What's that?
It's pretty significant.
Major arterial?
It'd be so outdated.
Is that an arterial, what's the classification of the street?
It's an arterial.
Uh, Oldham? Collector?
It's not a main, it's not a major or minor.
Travis?
So, I just, I don't wanna be negative, but what are the chances that there's other water lines leaking causing this issue that we are unaware of right now?
I would say high, the water lines around here are reaching their age limits as well, and they've actually asked us, you know, to include them in as much as we can, because they're trying to really track and resolve their water loss.
Important that when we investigate this more, and to start disturbing that area, that we know before that, that water lines are damaged or leaking, lest we be the ones blamed for causing them to be damaged or leak.
Right.
And the reason, another reason why that's critical is if a utility of some sort has that water line under there, and it has damaged our road to the tune of many hundreds of thousands of dollars, then there could be liability there.
As an example, if it's an AC pipe, which a lot of water mains in Bella Vista are asbestos cement, because of the pressure, at the time it was a desirable design selection of materials, an alternative selection, and so the result of that is that they've learned over the years that this will, this pipe material may weak, may weak, will, but may, and so.
I'm a week and a half POA to perform a leak test on that line.
It's hard to fix a leak when it's under the road, too.
Uh, it's hard, hard to see the leak, leaks don't show very well.
It's hard to fix the leak if it's, most cities didn't build it.
Something's gonna have to be dug up, and everybody's gonna need to be present when it happens, you know, and all that, you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
The one thing to maybe ask is, could they do a, a pressure test or a leak test on that line, isolated and do a leak test?
Yeah.
That would tell us, that would tell us if there is a problem there, because I know there was a break there, a serious break.
Get into those things, once we hear back from them on the scope of services, and go from there, but if it's something we wanna keep proceeding with.
Is your report digital?
Yeah, can we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Is that digital?
We can, we can email it out to you guys.
I'd be thrilled, thank you, Dan.
Thirty-five page.
Light read.
Pretty technical.
So, sorry, and, so there's not really a risk with, with, like, all the spring flooding that we might have, there's not really a risk?
They, it's one of those things, you know what I mean, it's, it's not right.
And there's element of common sense about the way that looks, and where it's going, how quickly it's deteriorated.
Whether that was, they feel confident that it's not gonna slide out or not, the state it's in is dangerous.
Yeah, but you guys are monitoring it, so if road closure needed to happen, we would do so, yeah.
Just for immediate, yeah, absolutely.
So in the event that the bill comes back and it's like a million dollars, or two million dollars, can we get quotes on a short-term fix, and then a long-term ultimate fix?
I mean, it would be going back to the drawing board, and re-engineering.
May not be many choices.
I don't know that you wanna look at a temporary fix.
No.
Because construction costs, first of all, are like this.
The other fixes, the other fix types weren't favorable for this scenario because of the shallow. The other fixes, the other fix types weren't favorable for this scenario because of the shallowness of it. There, there, the other two fixes, the soil nailing and the geo-grid restack is more desirable in a scenario of fifteen feet or greater depths off of the bedrock, for one. But with the geo-grid, it's still really not gonna much matter because of the slope of that rock. And the initial layers of that rock are chatty and crumbly as well. And so, you really need something driven down into that rock because of the degree of slope to hold that all back.
So, the other options they gave really are not feasible?
I mean, they said that they will work for a time, whether that's our careers or not. And I mean, that's kind of why we're here, because somebody else way back when didn't do it right.
And that we're here for that.
It's not my style to push that onto somebody else down the road.
Is that similar to like, what was it, Sunset? I mean, was, was it the same type of erosion problem?
It would, it would ultimately be the same end result, blowout.
Yep.
Well, that one was caused by little different things going on, but it would be.
But I mean, but the topography is the same, I mean, it's basic, same bedrock and, okay.
But wasn't Sunset an exposure of that face because they cut into the embankment next to the roadway? And they didn't protect it?
They shallowed it up.
They, they didn't protect the embankment from erosion.
Yeah.
A whole different kind of scenario, maybe.
So, that's where that's at. Okay, well, thank you, Dan.
Appreciate you guys.
Good report.
It's not great.
Good quality.
But like a good quality report.
Good quality, right. Okay, M is planning grants for 2025, Planning and Development Director, Taylor Robertson.
Adam, it is grant cycle and so staff is preparing to submit two projects, two, four different grants. One of them I kind of touched on a little bit during the resolution discussion of the grant that we got last time we applied. Last year in 2024, we applied for a planning study to reimagine Bella Vista Way slash seventy-one. We did not get that, however, staff, it is our number one priority route in the plan, in the comprehensive plan 2040. It's a Vision Zero, high priority plan for transportation safety and our 2015 Trails and Greenway Master Plan, it is also a priority route. So, all the plans that we've adopted say we need to do this. So, staff is gonna beef up the application pending you guys approve that we apply with this and apply to the RDOT Transportation Alternative, which is the grant that we got for the education outreach they're doing and what we got denied last time. And then we're going to apply for the Regional Planning, it's a long one, Surface Transportation Block Grant Program and affiliates as well. So, that's the plan to submit that. The cost came back for estimates, I'm looking at, still the same as last year. Last year's three hundred eighty-eight thousand, after reaching out to some firms, that price is still, that's still the estimated cost for something like this to reimagine it. So, the both grants that we apply for, hopefully we'd get one. Eighty percent would be covered by the grant, which would be around three hundred and ten thousand. And then the other twenty percent would be the city's match, however, staff plans to, just like I did with it, or just like we did with the outreach program, to apply with local grants, such as the Walton Family Foundation. There has been discussions on this one already. Some of us were shocked that we, that this didn't get awarded, so we're trying again. Multiple of these were, were shocked that we didn't get it. So, I think there's some interest there, should we apply again, is what I'm saying. The scope would basically be looking at from the Missouri line all the way down to the Bentonville city limits, down there, where we show the line, how we're in Lake Bellisus. Reimagining it to provide multiple modes of transportation, not just four lanes of traffic to provide the ser, or the shared use paths as well as sidewalks. We would prepare a cut that would show that, what it would look like all the way up and submit that. It's aligned with what other cities are doing in the region, it's aligned with the regional plan, the regional bike and ped plan. Other cities have been reimagining, or some of them are already starting. I know Fayetteville's got a seventy-one planning, lane use plan and zoning now, actually. They just created, their city council just adopted and approved a new zone for their seventy-one project that they're doing. But everyone is reimagining seventy-one, it's no longer the interstate, it is now a viable source for the community for multi modes to get you through city to city, not just from one point in the region to the other region. We have I-49 to do that now, so. It would include data analyzation as well, we'd be looking at the current state of congestion, possible relief situations. We'd be looking at current dangerous intersections as well as responses to provide relief to the dangerous intersections, of course, as Vision Zero. Public involvement would be a heavily portion of this grant. And as I noted, that's all the plans that we have adopted, or really want us to do this. So, I could go on to the specifics of the action goals that we have in our comprehensive, or yeah, our comprehensive plan. But the due date for the first grant, which would be through regional planning, is April third. So, that is this month, this is this month's last chance to get approval to apply to that. The Arkansas Department of Transportation Transportation Alternative Program will be, no deadline is April thirtieth, so we have another month to prepare for that one. So, the first wave is coming up here pretty quick. The second project we're wanting to submit to both of these grant opportunities is basically an upkeep. Our 2015 Trails and Greenway Master Plan is now ten years old. Its tenth birthday is next month, April twenty twenty-five. And best practices, our adopted plans can be updated every five to ten years to ensure that they're living, breathing and represent, or representative of the current, you know, demographics, population of Bella Vista. Especially here, so much has changed in the last ten years. We need to make sure that our plans that are telling your staff what to do, that are supposed to be guiding the decisions of your appointed officials, such as the Planning Commission Board of Zoning Adjustments, and then, of course, all the other committees that we have that are created now, like the Active Transportation Advisory Board, are aligned with what the people that live here want, as well as in taking into account regional goals as well. This year, 2025 Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission is updating the Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan that this 2015 plan was created off of ten years ago. So, since that's being updated, that will also be a drive to make sure that ours needs to be updated. So, the plan that it was created from is now changing. It needs to be updated to include that as well as representing the public, so. Any questions?
Larry?
Yeah.
So.
I've got a little more left.
Okay.
Let me, let me just finish this one, okay. So, the cost of this one would be two hundred thousand and, of course, we'd be applying for eighty percent. Would be a hundred and sixty thousand would be covered by TAP and/or NWA RPC. Twenty percent would be expected to be covered by the city, however, again, staff plans to apply for local private grants to cover that twenty percent. Now, can you take questions from me there?
So, my question is, you mentioned, you kind of slid right through it, is to reduce the traffic lineage for vehicles from four lanes down to two lanes, is that correct?
I did not say that. I said it is a four-lane only vehicular passage right now. It needs to provide all modes of tra, transportation per our adopted plan.
And I don't, don't disagree with that, but I think seventy-one is, is no longer a US highway in terms of its function. It's, it's really a local corridor for us, but it's really a connector between the folks who live and work in, who live in Bella Vista but work elsewhere to the south. It's also a major corridor for those who take children to Cooper School. They don't all come the back way, because there aren't many backways there, but there are backways. But once they leave and drop the children off, then they head to seventy-one South and they become a part of the southbound traffic from Mercy Way. So, it's a critical corridor for us and I would really, my view would be that we not at all compromise the vehicle travel capacity on that section, in other words.
Just adding.
Reducing the speed limit.
It's not doing any of that.
We saw that last year.
Not reducing the speed limit, not reducing the lineage, because it's critical for us.
Yeah, and that's why, I remember your comments from last year, whenever we talked about it and they got authorized to apply. But this is just a planning study, this isn't a, this isn't a construction grant or anything, we're not applying for that. We're looking for feasibility.
I realize that, but I think that's one of the parameters that we need to preserve, that four lane.
And I don't.
Well, they're gonna ride bikes on it regardless, so if we make it safe.
The idea is adding additional lineage that would be separate from being on a highway with vehicles.
The point would be to provide multiple modes of transportation, so that way the people, one, that wanna ride their bike, no longer need to drive, they can ride their bike on the shared use path. And then the bikes that are already riding on that dangerous intersection gets them off that and reduces congestion. So, we're looking at at least two ways of reducing that.
And actually making it better for everybody.
But again, that's, that's what it would tell us. It would, it would, the study, the whole point of the outcome was, would be to provide recommendations on to how to reduce congestion or reduce issues while increasing modes of transportation.
So, you're just.
I was thinking they were gonna lessen the lanes.
It would never, it doesn't know what it's.
I think only because it's critical for our, for our folks who live here and we're gonna have more folks who live here who are gonna work south.
Correct. We discussed this last year.
You're just looking for approval.
To apply, for a study, yes, that's great.
To apply for a grant, to tell us what we should.
Well, we don't need to get in the weeds about.
No, we don't, but we need to understand that that's not.
Well, I understand that, but that's, we don't know until we apply.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Taylor.
And, Ray?
I did wanna mention one thing because I think we got back to Travis, but Travis, it reminded me when he talked about going to Cooper School. Travis was talking about the left turn, you're heading south and the left, they even sent pictures, and the left turn, where are you going on Mercy Way, it gets blocked up in the morning.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, we did contact RDOT right away. And as I suspected, they shot us down on the being able to turn and yield. But they were amenable to having us adjust the timing on the left turn because you were saying nobody's coming the other way.
No one's coming the other way.
Well, then you can steal some of their time and have a longer left turn.
Yeah, so their reasoning was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Taylor, that there is an obstruction and only obstru, I can see perfectly, I can see all traffic, the only obstruction is maybe a little bit, yeah, I'm no,
I'm no transportation engineer, but I've, I've driven a time or two and. They sent me a little chart.
Yeah, I sit in that light to go, I have to drop my kids off at school and there's no cars coming.
Day.
I mean, I could see almost to the interstate and there's no cars coming.
They could change how they operate that left turn lane.
Well, I just suggested we, we do a yield to oncoming traffic like.
Like every other stoplight in the world has.
And they said, they said we can't do that because there's an obstruction.
There's not enough sight distance to provide a left turn le, like yield. Because of that other, that other left turn lane that turns into that shopping center, like there's.
Then nobody ever is in.
You're talking about like a flashing yell on that.
Yeah, like a yield instead of a permissive left turn, but there's not enough sight distance in order to provide a yield left turn.
They could fix that, that was the reasoning.
But the timing would make it different. Nobody's coming the other way.
Yes, you're going southbound, taking a left on Mercy Way.
It's every single day.
You cannot turn left unless you have a green arrow.
I know that, right.
And I suggested you make it to where you can turn left.
Put a caution arrow.
The rest of the time.
Just like.
A lot of times you don't have traffic.
They won't let us do anything through there.
Yeah, and I can see from, I can see miles that there's not oncoming traffic, but I still have to sit there and traffic's been backed up because of that.
So, yeah.
I know, I've, well, I've seen a lot of people run that light and I don't blame them.
It is a safety issue, I see, I see that in the morning as I'm in the far right lane, but people are trying to get over and then people still wanna use that middle lane, but people are trying to get over, it's definitely.
Well, one of the other bigger safety issues too is instead they just cut through Sonic, Allen's. And then there's a stop sign there, but it's definitely not stopped and then you have to.
And that's where you have to ride your bike to cross the street there.
Yeah, but anyways, they were, Taylor and Mary were pretty rapid with getting ahold of RDOT.
Well, she's gonna fail to re-time the light, right?
Well, yeah, so our, our engineer consultants are currently, they're starting that, they have to do a study, so they'll, you know, they'll put their counters out there, clock and see if a re-time is possible. Then they'll propose one or two proposals to us and then RDOT will want to review those proposals before we move forward with one of them, so.
It would make us a joy.
But it would be nice, we could make it better.
I have a question for Karen, are we responsible for all the signal lights on seventy-one? Do we pay for those?
That's Taylor.
Are you?
Yeah, we are, we oversee all the lights, so we oversee the maintenance of them. But when the time, it's, it's interesting, so the timing is, RDOT still wants to be involved.
Timing is RDOT's definition, it's not ours, but.
They wanna be involved, but we have a contract that oversees timing. So, we have a traffic with TLS and then we have a traffic with, or we have a.
Does this involve us taking over ownership of seventy-one?
No, no, no.
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 This is just a feasibility study.
We don't wanna take over ownership.
Yeah, that was the orig, back in the day, that was the original. I was always afraid to do that, especially after they told me what we thought. And now, I guess that RDOT's more willing to keep ownership, so.
Love them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Taylor. Okay, and we have already done, that was Shay, covered that. O is Extended Work Sessions, Councilmember Craig Hansel.
Mm-hmm. So, we didn't do, we didn't do N.
Oh, thank you, I incorporated.
Shay brought it up before, yeah. She brought it up and we were talking about that.
I wanted to share.
Okay, if we've talked about that, I'd like to bring up an issue under N.
Oh, okay.
And the issue is, I, my rumor mill says that we're not doing, some of the things we said we were supposed to do under the ordinance for new construction and that is that if there's a two-bedroom septic and they're building a house that has a potential third room in it that can be a bedroom, that we then put a sticker on the electrical box in the house that says "Two-bedroom," or if it's three-bedroom and they have a fourth room in the house, that it's a three-bedroom house. So, that sticker is on there. The rumor says that we haven't been doing that. We haven't been putting the stickers in or we haven't been requiring the deed restrictions if they have such a setting situation, is that true?
We've been requiring the deed restrictions and the deed restriction comes in play when there's a possibility of, of an additional sleeping room beyond what the plan is showing and it can be one, two, it doesn't matter, anything beyond what the septic system has shown was acceptable for the property. So, if there's a two-bedroom house and it's got a, an office or a library, it could be a sleeping room, so it'd be a deed restriction.
So, what about the sticker on the electric panel?
Oh, I can't, I can't speak on that.
Because that was a part of our code, that was going to be a sticker on the electrical panel so that evidence visually was there for anyone who saw the house, viewed the house.
I'm aware that it was part of the code. I haven't gone out and verified that those are going on the panels, so I can't speak on that.
So, who?
I think it was part of the code.
So, who would do that?
Fighting over that, you gotta do it.
The inspectors, the inspectors on the property who are doing their inspections would be.
Well, it's, it's, normally it's done before final inspection when you give occupancy.
That's what I would expect, before final inspection.
So, are your people doing that?
I can't speak on that, I, I can't guarantee that they are. It is, it hasn't been a top priority that I would have addressed it right now, that I'm aware of your concern for it and I can check it.
I think it's critical that we make sure it's done. It's part of our ordinance, first of all. If you're doing the deed restriction, that's only half of the battle.
It's only on houses that have septic systems, it's not on our houses.
Right. It's only on houses with septic.
I, I suspect I heard from the same folks because what, what, I understood it a little bit differently, that they're, they're selling these houses and some realtors are advertising for three bedrooms when the Department of Health.
Lender.
That's a, that's a, that's a whole, that's a whole nother part of the story, that the realtors are listing them and they claim that since we put the, what is it, the owners. No, the owners, they call it. They confess that the building is, is a two-bedroom septic, so they, they put that in there, but it's a three-bedroom house they're selling. And so, they're, they're falsely issued.
If it has a, it has a closet and a window and a door, then it could be a bedroom, so we shouldn't have approved that at the beginning.
They're calling it though like a, even without a closet, they'll be like, oh, it's a media room, it's an office. We know they're putting a body in there, it's a three-bedroom square foot house.
The way our ordinance works is the solution is to put the sticker on the electrical panel and to have the deed restriction. But we don't regulate sellers, the realtors.
We, we have not to date, but my question is, do we need to start? It's against the, it's against the state code, clearly, but nobody has picked up the ball on that issue.
Would that be a new word?
What, what state code are you talking about, Larry? That it violates?
Septic code.
The, the marketing, principle, real estate marketing practices?
No.
Of how they're listed?
The state code says if it's a two-bedroom septic, it's a two-bedroom house, but they're selling them.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know.
Listing them and selling them as a three-bedroom and they acknowledge that, yep, my septic is only two-bedroom. is only two-bedroom. My experience with that is when I first came down here, and my background is that we lived on septic systems where I came from, that was, so I had some information about it, and I bought a three-bedroom house that had a two-bedroom septic.
I, I would just, we may, but one person calls a couple of y'all, and we've got a six-month debate about a new law, and there are 30,000 people in town. I just want, I always want to make sure we have perspective. I'm not saying that one person may be enough, but I just want to make sure we've got enough perspective on the true nature of an issue before you take your valuable time and others' valuable time to do a difficult ordinance.
And I, and I don't know if we have, if our current ordinance allows enforcement of that issue. We, we've taken the steps to notify the public.
We consciously took an effort, if I recall, that we were only going to, we were going to not try to regulate how they sell them or what they say in the real estate contract situation. We wanted people to have information, so we wanted, and, and if they were going to, we wanted to stop people from bringing back a set of plans and marking a bedroom, a study, and saying, oh, look, it doesn't have that bedroom now, so it matches the permit. So we created the deed restriction process where when the building official determines, no, that's really a bedroom, based on the code and the determination, say, well, no, it's, it's only going to be three bedrooms, then execute a deed restriction, and we will let you build that house, and then that's traceable in the chain of title, so that people know on notice that it's a three-bedroom house, that it has a three-bedroom sewer permit, a septic permit, and then on the new construction, putting a big label on the electrical box that says, this house has been certified for three bedrooms by the Health Department, and let people know. And then after that, it's going to be buyer beware. We've given, you have the information, you have the ability to find it, it's in the chain of title, and that, and obviously that only deals with new construction, so you've got these older houses where people are doing this stuff still, and we haven't addressed that. What you're talking about is regulating the real estate agent business. I'm a little concerned about how far we get into that, about their sales practices, how they list a property, they've got a lot of rules, they're regulated by the state, I'm not even sure we could go that far because it could be, the state is sort of in charge of that. I believe that if we try to do that, and it's not clear that we have authority, we will get sued, not to say that we shouldn't do it, but it's going to happen. And, and so, but also, people need to understand too, and I don't want to take more time than I have to, just because they can't come to the government and get a remedy, doesn't mean they don't have one. They can talk to an attorney, I bought a house, you fraudulently listed it. It's not what you told me it was. I've only got this size septic tank, it's not what I need. I'm suing the seller, I'm suing the agent, I'm suing everybody there for selling the house, and I'm going to go to court, and I'm going to get my money back, or I'm going to get rid of it. They can always do that. And in these isolated situations that you hear, that might be the best thing for them to do, but we can't provide a remedy for every wrong.
No.
And so, and I can't speak to the six on the council at that time, but I think they struck that balance, right?
I remember it took us about a year to get that fast, it was quite a struggle.
The issue is, is weird at some places again. You probably got a call, I know I got a call. Can we just bring it up?
No, that's great.
Good discussion.
Okay, the next one is O, extended work session, council member Craig Honchel.
Okay, um, this came about, well, I mean, I've been considering it for a while. With the new council members and the things that we have going on as a community, you know, with the freeze and nickel type thing, you know, and just to avoid any kind of FOIA problems, you know, and it's, you know, just like Shay was saying earlier, I get worried when, let's talk about it, win, this is win. So that's my thing, is that if, if we want to have a little bit more of a collaborative effort to do things, if we have an extended work session, the news is here, media is informed, everybody knows. If you want to have a little roundtable meeting off to the side with your constituents, everybody knows. You know, that, that's the only concern that I have, is that if there's things that we need to discuss as a group, you know, and the mayor wants to go home, or whoever wants to filter out, we have access to, you know, that type of communication at large that everybody knows about. And for the sake of transparency, because I don't think, you know, if we, and I'm not taking jabs at anybody, so please don't misinterpret what I'm saying here. I'm just saying that I think for the sake of transparency, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want to get FOIA. So this is just an effort to maybe give a little bit of extra time to council members or staff, or to the public, to interact and, you know, collaborate, you know, just something to consider.
Are you saying after the meeting ended?
Yeah, after this.
Ricky, we discussed this after the last council meeting, while we were still in session, like, where's the room? And my kind of thought was like, hey, in the art of collaboration, because I know there might be, like, you and Shay have a special interest in the fire department and those sort of things. You guys collaborate on something for that in a space where you could, you could, you could break off into a small group. If Larry and I wanted to work on something together, we had a joint interest in, like, septic and water, and like, trying to figure out, hey, I think you're interested in this, I think I am too, let's talk. Be able to break off into a smaller group, because sometimes not having all six of us working on something is probably best at once, but coming together and not reinventing the wheel, it could maybe like, I know when the STR thing back in 2022 was going on, we had all these different versions, and I feel like maybe we could have eliminated having three separate versions come before council.
You're duplicating a lot.
If they had a chance to collaborate, and like, like, hey, I love the pieces that you have there, I don't like this part though, but this piece is great, and be able to collaborate in an open way, opposed to maybe like, having to schedule and putting this on Wanda, to be like, hey, Wanda, Anna and I want to go discuss this, and having to have a public notice every time we wanted to go discuss something, having it, was, was one monthly chance for us to all break off if needed. I'm still having my private roundtable discussions with citizens, but knowing that, like, Travis and I, if we ended up award one-one, and being of constituents, we would go to Wanda with that, and like, like that public meeting, for collaborative nature, but being able to have small groups work on things, because we are better when we work together.
And what I think it also could provide is an opportunity to give a topic per month, and then there's a lot of interested citizens that may want to come in to be able to listen to the conversation or be a part of it, instead of maybe the citizen reaching out to six different people, you know, we all tend to go to work on something. This would allow for maybe whatever, to your point, whether it's septic or, you know, whatever, it allows us to take that extra 15 or so minutes to talk openly and legally about a subject, and certainly for the public to be aware.
If people were breaking off, I would want to record that.
Well, it all has to be.
Does she have to record it?
Yes, she has to record.
Okay.
So that's why picking maybe just a, like, one or two subjects.
That makes sense.
Instead of just broadly where you go over there, you go over there, so maybe next month it's, you know, done.
You can do that now, I mean, you, you always, I, I'm talking too much this evening, I'm catching myself, but.
You're doing great, we love you.
But these work sessions have become so much more formal over the years, that, and, you know, we, and because we go over the agenda, and, and I know many times I've said, look, save your debate for the meeting and all that, and that, that, okay. But, you know, there's no real thing you have to accomplish at a work session. It's just, we're notifying the public, we're going to get together and work on stuff, and look at next week's agenda, and talk about what we need to talk about. And as long as we're here talking, and if we've sent the public the notice, they knew we were going to start doing this at 5:30, you can keep going as long as you want. It's just kind of what you would prefer to us put maybe on these discussion items, or even, I mean, you could have, you know, you want to have a, a citizen back and forth, or a Q and A, or, you know, whatever you want to do, like, at the end or something, you want to call it something other than a discussion item, you have flexibility, you don't have to pass an ordinance to do any of that. It's really just a matter of us just putting it on the list, so everybody knows what we're going to do.
Put the subject matter down and then.
Sure, you know, I want to.
I wasn't advocating an ordinance, I just didn't know if we could, I didn't know if we could work beyond as collaborative.
If you want to break off in separate groups, that gets a logistical problem.
Okay, I didn't know.
You know, legally you probably could, as long as every part of it's being recorded, and, and you see what I'm saying, so.
Yep, I didn't consider that.
It's kind of your pleasure and how you might want to do it.
So if we chose one or two topics and put them down at the end here after the adjournment?
Like we do for.
Well, I mean, we've had several topics tonight, but, I mean, it kind of depends on if you want to get into a different thing, like, I want to have a citizen discussion, or if I want to.
Citizen input.
Well, yeah.
But if you told the citizens you're going to do it at the end, they don't know, they don't know when the end is.
And I feel consistent, like, in a flat discussion, like, around, I've been.
You have to have a lot of endurance to make it to the end sometimes.
I've started hosting roundtables.
They would come at the beginning, they would, you know, tell them to say.
Well, I don't know, we don't have a tremendous amount of citizen participation at work sessions, but in fact, tonight, I don't even, do we have a, any citizens that are just in? Oh, you don't count, Linda.
She's an elected.
But that's sort of the goal, is if there's passionate.
He's a citizen.
She's an appointed official.
Citizen input at work is a slippery slope.
I think the idea is to be like, having it, because I like hosting a roundtable, so I can have a discussion with citizens that can spur, and like, that, hey, it's like, we're having one for April, and our April one's going to be about, like, trees, I want to have talks of the tree, a biopic, a group of people come, to discuss things like that, our concerns, or our questions, and solutions, or what's happening, and good ideas, and then that could be a jumping off point, to be like, okay, X, Y, and Z. I welcome everybody to have, whatever communication you like to, I mean, on your own in that regard. I, it's been good turnout, it's been positively received, but making sure that, like, it's not for everybody to come to. Please don't come.
The important.
You guys, please don't.
You, you can have an event with your constituents, any of you can have an event with your constituents that's just you. What the rest of you need to know is that if you all want to come, then, and that notice didn't go out, then you got a problem.
Yeah.
So, and that doesn't need to happen, so I, I'm not going to speak for anyone, but you can always inform the public, because you probably want people to come to your thing.
Yeah.
And you've covered the bases, you know, you could just say, there may or may not be other council members at the meeting.
But we, and we have to record it.
And you'd have to record it.
Record it, and like, get it, and that, there's more that Wanda, there's like, different.
But if you just want to have a, I'm going to take a room in the library, meet with a dozen people, that doesn't have to be recorded, you can do that.
That's what I love.
Okay?
Like a non-recorded meeting, on that.
May I, may I say something? I do not mind at all, you know, reporting out to the news, it, it takes me about five minutes.
Okay.
So that, just know that it is not a big disturbance. I would much rather that we all, you know, fall under FOIA, and I would be happy to conform the press. I think the part that gets more difficult is the recording, so, but the, just sending it out to the press is easy, so I don't know if anybody legally can record besides me. Well, that might be a question to look into, but.
And someone with the city would need to record it, I'm not, I'm not sure, but, and then that recording needs to be retained.
Right, no, I, it's, it's.
It had to be transcribed, it had to be minutes, it's nothing like that.
Yeah, retained for a year.
Yeah, I already think I know the answer to that question, would not be wise on my part, I'm ultimately responsible, so.
And so let me, let me also say this, because what inevitably can happen is if you had, say, we sent a notice, and maybe there were a couple of you at a meeting, but then it becomes a discussion about who's going to run for office again next time.
Oh, yeah, that's different.
Now we've got a different kind of problem.
Yeah.
We've got a problem about city resources, official activities as relates to campaign activities. And so, you know, you're going to have a meeting, say, in our conference room, now all of a sudden we've got a problem, because now we've got a political event in the conference room, and we don't allow that. So can you see how it can become, very unintentionally become a legal thicket? And so I just want to caution, it, it can definitely be, somebody brings that stuff up, say, we're not here to talk about that, we're doing my policy, we're here to talk about, you know, and, but you've got to be vigilant about that stuff, because it, it will not only become a violation, but it will become a tool, a political tool, to be used against you or for you. It, it just, it'll be the scuttlebutt on the internet, it'll be, it'll be stuff that will be distraction from what you're trying to achieve, so I, I just encourage you all to, you all know that, but be careful.
Well, that was the rest of why I wouldn't talk about that.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we could or not, so that's that.
I think the thought is probably a desirable thing, that we could add a list of things or a subject, I don't know if you'd want a lot.
Something to think about.
Well, sometimes when I come to these work sessions, things happen since the deadline to put out the agenda that I would like to talk about, but it was past deadline when they came up, so.
For the work session, you can still talk about things.
You just need to talk about something, that's not a big deal.
Very early.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Mayor Flynn, I have that extra from Councilmember Harp. Remember, we talked about how that was, you have it down, okay, that's good.
Yeah, I have it down as letter Q. We have a crucial one to cover first.
Yes, okay.
So, so we can interject if we have a last-minute subject.
Yeah, particularly on work sessions, not so much in the meetings.
Not in a regular meeting, that's not really, not, but if you're sitting here, and you've invited somebody to say, come to that work session at the end, I'm going to bring it up, and I'm going to ask you to say, that kind of informal stuff, that's what the work session's for, okay?
And we kind of, it's still good, I think, to kind of make an agenda so people see what's what, but yeah, it's, it's okay there.
Putting it down here at this time, a lot of them, they want to give it a, put it under a pillow and think about it, and say, do I like that, don't I like that, have I had complaints, do I not have complaints?
So letter P is a lease Mick the Frog sculpture, and this is an example that I realized at the last minute, Demra had sent this to me. The artist, we had, because it's a lease, council has to approve it, it's only $1,800 per year, but technically, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, Jason, but I was pretty sure they had to.
I don't know Mick the Frog.
I had to approve.
Because he had to come with a permit for the frog?
They had to approve leases.
We do have to approve leases, yes.
It refers to Mick Jagger, the artist was a big Rolling Stones fan, so now we have a sculpture that doesn't look like Marilyn Monroe, and we have a sculpture that doesn't look like Mick Jagger, so.
There you go.
Anyway, so Mick the Frog is replacing the one that the artist sold. One of the reasons the artists do this, and they rent sculptures out for $1,800 for a whole year, is because, well, first of all, the artist gets exposure, but also a bunch of people see it, and somebody might want to buy it, and they even put prices on them ahead of time in case we want to buy it, we bought one, but, but the price is very quite a bit, so some of them are pretty high. Anyway, so I sent this, I had Wendy send this out to you by email today, just so you could see what it was, but it's a lease, so it's going to be on next week, and I just want to give a little warning. So then the next one, not on the list, is Q, which is Travis Harp. He pointed out to us, we neglected to put this on, he wanted to change the way of choosing us, we neglected to put this on, he wanted to change the way of choosing committee members. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I have just a little discussion on the art piece, but $1,800, not much, but if we're $750,000 in the red and can't hire essential workers, or it's, you know, hard to, hard to afford that, then I have a hard time spending money on art. If we can't even, you know, do life safety stuff, that's all I want to say.
Yeah, we have had people bring that up about art before.
Yeah.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that the commitment for the P item is that we have a budget somewhere or something that said we were going to continue this lease process and the money is.
Yeah, it's replacing one that the guy sold.
It's budgeted, so it's not something that's new.
But that's a reasonable point, and people have brought that up to me before.
Yeah.
I have a theory that the aesthetic part of a city is very important.
But $1,800 is a big difference from.
And I also can't hire someone for $1,800, but point well taken, it's, we've got to watch every penny, certainly. Well, I think the classic example is the open road thing, where you fight and fight and fight, and you have a budget, and now it balances, and then something bad happens, right? And then, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I've mentioned this before when we were together at some point in time, I don't know, I mentioned it in a city council meeting, did a survey online that was pretty popular in my favor, but anyways, just as a city council member, just speaking for myself, if you give me one person to vote for, for a board, a commission, or whatever we sign off on as a city council for your appointments, or for whoever is appointing these people, I'm really inclined to vote yes for someone if I don't have other options, even though maybe they're not a good fit, maybe, for whatever reason, and, you know, could always come back, well, the council approved it, well, we didn't have any other options. So I would just like to suggest, and I don't know if it's in the form of a resolution, or an ordinance, or if it's even possible, but to give the city council members the top two or three applicants of each position that you're asking us to appoint. That way we actually, you know, have a choice and we're not representing.
Yeah, you had mentioned that before, Wendy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I love the spirit of this. This is like, having an appointee or an option presented by, only one option presented, it kind of is federal down, like, is this something that happens at all levels of government? Do I like it? Particularly no. But I'm afraid that if we do get to a point where it's debate between two or three candidates, it will become a popularity contest, it will become a thing where, well, I happen to, you know, go to church with them, and they're a good person, are they best for their job? Hmm, someone has more better qualifications, but I really like, I really like them. I'm afraid that's going to become the case. I did, though, enjoy, love seeing the rubrics and like, seeing all the applicants and saying, hey, we had 30 applicants of this, and this is how we scored it, and this is like, you can see like, why, and like, oh no, when I read through, I'm like, oh, it makes total sense why you scored Jack so high up, because he was a better candidate, in my opinion, based on his resume and what the staff agreed. I'm afraid that if we do this, and I love the spirit of it, that it would become a popularity contest, or more complex than we would need to have, also because we have to have a consensus, and it has to be four of us agreeing on that sort of thing, and I'm afraid that we're, it's going to be hard to do so.
I'm not sure, it depends upon who the selection, the recommendation might be. Are you saying that if there are five candidates, as an example, who apply, you got one position to fill, that they give you the first and second choice?
Yes.
Is what you're asking for?
Yes.
So their ranking of the first and second. And if you recall at the, what, the last meeting, we appointed the planning commission guy, I voted no on it, because I thought he, based on my conversation with him, he was way up here, and his workload would be way down here, he would lose interest before he really got into the program. That may not be the case, but that was really the impression I had, and so I didn't think he was the best choice. When you looked at the rankings, the four staff had identical voting or results, so was that an independent conclusion, or was that a group conclusion? So you have to ask that question, and I think it was a group consensus, not an individual one, or you would have seen other ones in there, not four on one, okay? So I'm thinking that maybe the assessment, the evaluation was not an equitable one.
Well, I'd like to say a couple of things about this first, but this is really like the federal government, it, you know, the president picks his cabinet, and then the senate votes advise and consent. I do think it's not a bad idea for us, if you guys like to see the resumes and whatnot, we wouldn't have to change any ordinances.
Right.
But, you know, all kinds of things happen in different committees. For instance, in the art committee, 10 people apply, so Demera knows, and the other people on the committee have an idea what kind of person they want, what kind of qualities, which you guys don't, and then they pick out three, and then they interview them. They're not just looking at resumes and picking somebody, is my point. And in the case of Taylor, what happened with some of the applications, is she knew them personally, she'd worked with them for a couple of years. And it's not like, I mean, they were with other companies, but she were, you know, she was familiar with them. And it's not like, oh, I'm familiar with this guy, I'm picking him. Sometimes it's, I'm familiar with this guy, I'm not picking him. So if you guys are going to pick, well, she's supposed to get up in a public meeting and say, oh my gosh, don't pick Joe Dokes? I mean, come on, it's impossible. And are you going to interview them? How are you going to interview? They'd have to interview one at a time with each of you, or else you all interview them. And, you know, in my eyes, it's one or two of these committees that are really important, and some of these may be not quite so much, like, the planning commission's super important. And some of these others, I mean, you shouldn't be wasting your time screwing around with this, frankly, you've got all these big problems, big, big problems, big money things to think about, and you're going to worry about who's on some little commission, you know, makes no sense. That's my.
Some of those, some of those committees, while they're standing committees, are not critical to the city's future.
Well, the other thing we're tending to do, which you've probably noticed, is more than 50% of the time, we're reappointing somebody who's on. So when somebody volunteers, and they've shown up and done a good job, you know, there may be somebody a little better, but I hate to tell the person, oh, well, you're out, thanks for volunteering, but we found a guy who's a little smarter now, you know what I mean? So usually we let them stay on if they're willing, and a lot of times people have had enough, you know, different things happen in their lives, and planning commission's a good example, Linda Lloyd wanted to be on again, and the other lady, Susan Doole, had things going on, she got a job, well, she works full time, then she got a job teaching part-time at University of Arkansas, and so she was like, no, I've had enough, it was fun, but, so then we pick somebody else. Plus, if you look at the quality of people we're getting and picking, you know, it's a case of if it ain't broke, don't fix. Some of these people, their credentials are unbelievable.
Yeah.
I look at them, I say, I can't believe we're getting people this good.
And that many of them, too.
Yeah.
And also, I would say that the federal government's not always the shining example of how we should operate, so.
Quite much, not, but.
Legally, legally, let me tell you what, you asked what it would take, what, so as we've created these various commissions and boards over time, each ordinance that created them dictated how, you know, the membership, how many people are on this board, and how the membership is determined. So, we, for everything we've got, there are exceptions, but the mayor appoints with the approval of the council, so, I mean, it's not, it's basically the same thing, but, so if you say, we want to see the three and pick the one we want, then the council's appointing, and you're taking the appointment power away from the mayor. That's really what you're doing. You're allowing the mayor to present three options, and then the council makes an appointment from the three options or something. That's something you legally could probably do, but I, that would be unlike anything I've ever seen at local level. I mean, that's part of being the chief executive, is to make appointments, and then your say is to whether approve, not this mayor, but you get some mayor that appoints somebody that, oh my, you know, what is this? We don't want this, well, then you've got a veto over that, you can say no, I don't know who it's going to be, but it's not going to be that person. And, so that's how it's been structured, but how would you change that? Every ordinance that created every one of our advisory boards and commissions would have to be amended, to amend how the membership is determined.
And how the appointments.
And how, and who makes the appointments. Now, there is, and the biggest example, and I don't want to dwell on this, but as a council, the council does appoint its own members to the AMP commission, when you're talking about the positions, and we've discussed that before, but even on the AMP commission, that commission itself appoints who they want with your approval. So it's not, you don't get, you don't get a say in that, so.
I would be okay with even moving it to something more like that, where the tree advisory board, they appoint their own members, and take it out of the city's hands.
Well, but the, the AMP commission has its own independent legal authority.
Yeah, we have.
And these, these are advisory boards we're talking about, that really can't, they can advise and provide information, provide a forum, and those things count, but they really don't have the power to do anything. They can't enter into contracts, they can't spend money, they, they're very limited in the authority that they have. And so the AMP is different, and then we're governed by state law on the AMP commission, it tells us how that's done.
And it's very specific, like, who is on it? Like, it has to be this many members of this?
Exactly. And we have, and some of our advisory boards, we say, you know, they need to be a citizen of the city, and I can't even think of what all, we got the tree advisory, we've got the arts council, library advisory.
Trails.
Active transportation, and they're all pretty much appointed by the mayor, approved by the council.
I would be even fine with just saying the mayor can appoint them without council's approval, if that's an option, because I just, I feel responsible for representing, if I don't have any idea who they are.
You can do that, too.
You know? It just, I feel wrong voting for something that I have no idea about, and I don't like, I don't like the way it is now. If everyone else is fine with it, then I won't bring it up again, but.
I feel like knowing, and seeing the rubric of the applicants and saying, hey, I'm appointing, you know, Linda Lloyd, and here's like, the rubric, and here's the applicants, and like, so we can see like, how the staff, or whatever governing, or whatever selection committee, how they got there, that would be like, oh, okay, like, I see it. Now, if we still disagree with that appointment, we can vote no, we can't say who's going to be in there.
You can keep voting no until the person you want is put forward, you know?
Well, we also now are receiving the applications, so there's nothing that says we can't reach out to that person and have a conversation. If you're seeing someone come across and you're like, oh, I don't know if they're going to be good for this, we can reach out, just have a conversation, meet with them.
We would see them after the appointment has been selected.
But before you vote on it.
Yeah.
But Shay, how would you know, I'm sorry, Anna, how would you know if you didn't look at the applicants, all of the applicants who say, well, that one that they're proposing might not be the best.
If it's important to you, you would take the time to look at them all.
Well, did you like getting all the resumes?
Yeah, I looked at it.
It was informative, yeah. I just didn't know, like, oh, why these people were the best choices, and like, who should the arts council, like, she was incredible.
Yeah.
I was like, are you kidding? Yes, give her the job! And so it made it easier to like, I felt secure in voting yes for somebody.
But there were other people that were all.
Also phenomenal, right.
There were a lot of them in that arts committee that could fill that bill.
Absolutely, but knowing that when they selected, it's like, I feel like, absolutely, this is a great person for this position, yes, I feel comfortable voting for this person.
Well, it sounds like from talking to you guys, I don't have a lot of support on this, so.
I think the spirit, I think, is beautiful, I love the spirit of it.
Well, it changes our whole process, Travis, is what it really does.
Which is a disaster.
And it takes away the authority of the mayor, who is the chief executive officer.
Well, I even suggested giving him the full authority.
Don't like that either.
But you, but you approve his appointments all the time, I think the only one that said no was Larry, and that was for, you know.
One planet.
Yeah, so if we just, if we approve him and go back and look at one of those information for history, it's always been approved.
Because like, I do trust Mayor Flynn, I don't know who's always going to be in that seat.
Yeah.
And so, in a protection for our constituents as well, if we somehow get a real crumb of a person in that seat, knowing that, hey, we have the ability, it's not a dictatorship, it's like a, hey, this is who I think is best based on the information that's given, then we can be like, yes or no, but if we're like, no, why would you have that person? That's a, it's a bad, yeah.
Well, next week, we're going to start that process and have somebody from the tree board, right? Somebody from the tree board might have come speak about what the tree board's doing.
I think it's fantastic.
I was going to try and start with some of the ones that.
Yeah, Mike is fantastic.
Maybe we know a little less about.
Next week?
Yeah, we are, we're trying to do it at the real meeting instead of the work session.
Subcommittee commissions.
Some more people will see it.
And then we know it's happening, and like, so we know it's happening, too, like, Mike's fantastic.
Okay. Well, that's all I have, unless somebody else has anything. Thanks for your participation.
Happy to share that with you.
Craig, no extra innings tonight?
What?
Said no extra innings tonight, then?
No.
Some of y'all are talking about.